...to pay for those kinds of things. That's typically the kinds of things that people talk about with school choice.
Sure, I'd like to address that real quick. The proclamation was a holdover from the previous administration. I thought it was, it didn't represent the best quality of education for every one of those. It represented the best education for what we had in our community, which I think everyone is, I would hope everyone's for. We can fill in what we have into that proclamation and say we're for the best possible education we can give our community.
Okay. All right, the other question that I had, had to do with 2020-40 for the refund for veteran status. Can you explain to me what this is about?
I believe this was addressed at previous council meetings, 2019? If somebody who was on 2019 could better explain it than me.
Sure, I don't mind. There was a disabled veteran who had come before the town of Phillipsburg, moved into town of Phillipsburg, I believe it was in 2014, 2015. They were not aware of our reimbursement or the fact that they were, they did not have to pay the property taxes. The law afforded the council the ability to refund their property taxes.
So this is for a 100% disabled veteran?
That is correct, yes sir.
Who once again was not aware of his ability or her ability to request an exemption from property taxes?
That would be correct, yes sir. This is for the same veteran, I believe, that you're thinking of?
This is the same one?
Yes. This is just a resolution now with the exact number in it. We voted to pass it. It's now, it now has the correct number in it, so we can pass it this evening.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, anyone else? Okay, I'd like to move on to ordinance's second reading. Ordinance 2020-01, first reading occurred on January 7th, 2020. Ordinance of the Town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey. Amending Chapter 120 Defined Contribution Retirement Program. Section 1 Eligible Positions of the Code of the Town of Phillipsburg to add the position of Mayor. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I'd like to open this up to the public, please. Anyone? No comments?
Hello, my name is Ian Watson, I live in 975 Green Street. I've lived in Phillipsburg for several years, but not originally from here. I wanted to come up and question why we are now providing a pension for the mayor. As far as I know, in the previous two administrations, Ellis and Mayor White, there was no pension for the mayor in the past. Why is this something that we're announcing at this time?
Yeah, of course, I was in the pension program.
He was in the pension system. And this isn't a pension, this is a deferred compensation. This does not go into a pension system. This would be similar to a 401K where the mayor contributes and it...
Is there a match? I'm not sure if there's a match.
I'm not sure. Yeah, there's a, I think up to a...
A smaller percentage.
A smaller percentage. But it's based on his own contributions. It does not go into a pension fund that accrues interest or is in a bigger fund.
Is this in any way funded by the taxpayers through the match or anything like that?
There is a match.
Does that differ from the pension plan that existed before for previous years?
Yeah, because I think it only, it only exhausts up to what is contributed where the pension system keeps paying out, if I'm, can anybody correct me on that? I'm in a, I have some experience with this in my own personal life. They do have an end to it. Once the fund is exhausted, it does not keep paying.
On the contributions.
Yeah, it's based on the contribution, the matching, nothing more. So if you exhaust your contributions in 10 years, depending on the payout schedule that you choose, it stops. It doesn't keep going like a traditional pension system would.
So does this differ from the one that this is before and that this is not a traditional pension plan?
Yeah, it's not a pension plan at all. It's a pension plan is a bunch of people putting into a pool where they pay out or to be done. This does not do that. Once the contributions are exhausted, so what you put in is what you get out.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Amy Bruson, 94 Oldman Street in Phillipsburg.
Sir.
Just wanted to clarify something that I didn't hear anyone talk about, what the town's contribution was. My understanding is that it's 3% of the salary.
It's two and a half percent. I thought it was two and a half percent of the contribution.
Completely different contribution.
Yeah, it does look like it.
It's a smaller percentage.
Well, it's a small percentage, but you know, just so people are aware.
Sure.
It is 3% of the mayor's salary.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'd like to open the discussion to Councilman White.
I have nothing.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Nothing.
Councilman Fulmer?
No sir.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Good sir.
Role call?
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes.
Next, on to the ordinance's first reading. First is 2020-02, Ordinance Establishing Salaries for SOA Police Department. Move.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mayor White? Councilman White?
Sorry about that. Hold on, I have a sore break.
Sorry, Mary. It's fine, sir.
I understand that there's been a lot of negotiations bringing us to this point. I think it's somewhat too high, but I didn't negotiate this. I'll go along with it because it's been a long time, but I think that, you know, these salaries for our SOA is out of sight.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Nothing.
Councilman Fulmer?
No sir.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
I'm just going to clarify what I said before, is that regardless of where the salaries are at, this has to do with pulling the Superior Officers Association to be in line with the rest of the officers. So with my previous career, I had a discussion earlier, I had a discussion earlier today, actually, with some current, some current law enforcement members and some past, it's now, at least in the state police, it was still a 10-year problem of the upside-downness of the pay scale. And then what happens is you start getting, our officers will start to defect or turn down promotions. So if that happens to our police infrastructure and the return on investment we have in our training and our officers who know that have invested in this town and live in this town, to defect because of the salary scales of being upside down, that would, I don't think that would be a really good message. It says this just makes the scale completely even across the board, the disparage of the money. I completely get it and I do support it.
Okay, thank you very much. Role call?
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
I've seen.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Next ordinance up for first reading is 2020-03, Ordinance of the Town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey. Amending and supplementing Chapter 369 Liturgy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman White?
I think this, this is well needed. I think that it will add some strength to our present ordinances.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
No problem with me. I just hope we impose the maximum as required by law, which I believe is up to $2,000.
Councilman Fulmer?
Right, so I'm tired of seeing the Warren reporter tossed all throughout the town of Phillipsburg, but just so everyone is aware that this does put the onus on the resident as well. So if you do not want the Warren reporter, once this is passed, you will have to send a certified letter requesting a receipt to the Warren reporter. And once that's acknowledged, only then, after it's placed back on your property, can you take action and can they be fined. But hopefully this does curb that issue. That is all.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Good sir.
I couldn't agree with this more. Role call?
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Sir, anything, anyone needs to be pulled? Councilman White?
2020, I'd like to discuss that 2020-40, I mean, 2020-46.
What was that, 2020-40, is that?
I'm sorry. 2020-40, 2020-46.
2020-46. Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
2020-42 through 44.
Good. Was that 2020-32 through 32?
20, 42 through 44.
Councilman Fulmer?
No.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Good sir.
I am okay with the remaining items. I'd like to make the motion to pass the remaining items, minus 2020-40, 2020-42, 2020-43, 2020-44, and 2020-46. The remaining consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Role call?
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. So 2020-40, open for discussion, Council?
I'll need to, yeah, a motion to, yeah, someone needs to move it, second and then the discussion.
Can I get a motion for 2020-40, please?
Motion for 2020-40.
Second?
Second.
Like to open it for discussion, Councilman White?
Yes, I'm all for the individual to get every penny that he is due, but the town of Phillipsburg, we did not have what we are giving back, because we're giving back what we sent to the school district and we're giving back what we sent to the county. And that is not in our coffers. So I believe that, you know, the man should get it, but I don't think we have it to give it to him, only with what we kept in the town coffers.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Nothing.
Councilman Fulmer?
No sir.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Good sir.
Okay, and I am okay with this. Can I get a role call, please?
Councilman White?
I'm staying.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Moving on to 2020-42, Resolution Authorizing Award of Contract for Professional Services with Van Cleef Engineering Associates LLC for Engineering, Surveying, Design, and Construction Administration Services, Warren Street, Page. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Open for discussion, Councilman White?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Actually, all three could be done via consent, I believe, because it's a pretty basic question.
Okay.
I believe all three of these, since this was a late addition, and I know the town engineer is here, I believe these are, just for the public's benefit, going to be funded through phases of grants that were previously applied for. So the town naturally has a match to it. And just for those who weren't at the sewer meeting, we did discuss, so I hope that this happens, addressing the sewer, the sanitary, and all the other issues at the same time we're doing roadwork, so everything's incorporated at the same time. So that's all I want a clarification on, but if you don't mind, I'd like to just do all three as one reading and lump those three together.
Yeah, motion to amend, so to approve 2020-42, 43, and 44.
Can I get a motion to amend 2020-42? A motion to approve 42, 43, and 44?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Fulmer?
No.
Discussion, Council Vice President McVeigh?
Good sir.
As well, role call?
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes.
2020-46, Resolution of the Town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey, to assume control of the FERC Town Youth Organization under the supervision and direction of the Department of Recreation?
So moved.
Second. Like to open for discussion, Councilman White?
Yes, I don't remember us, you know, discussing this at any time, and I think that bringing the, this organization in under the town, I think would be wrong. I think that they can run the organization much better than we could ever run. I, I believe in smaller government, not larger government, government oversee. They've been running this organization for years and I think they do a great job. I understand that there's an issue with the insurance. I think that can be worked out. I spoke with, you know, Mr. Merlo, I talked to, you know, Heidi and our auditor, and I think we can work that out and still have them independent of the town of Phillipsburg.
Thank you. Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
The only question I would have is clarification that once this happens, and it hasn't happened yet, anyone, coaches, everybody affiliated with the organization, now officially Town of Phillipsburg employees, exempting them from serving on all boards since they're employees?
They'd be volunteers.
But they abide by the Town of Phillipsburg policies, procedures, and handbook?
Correct.
And they're considered an employee, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Fulmer?
I have a question regarding that. We once had a UEZ director that was a volunteer who served as the director of the UEZ. How, so what we're doing is we're excluding coaches or people involved in that organization from serving on boards?
I think the councilwoman's question was whether they'd be subject to the town's policies and procedures regarding workplace conduct, and the answer is yes.
That is correct. So they're not excluded from serving on boards?
I don't, if you have a specific example, I'd have to look at the handbook to see where we have that exclusion. If there was a conflict, obviously, they would be prohibited.
Sure, if there's a conflict, okay.
Hey, thank you very much. Council Vice President McVeigh?
This has a few sides to it, and I, as you can hear from up here, there is difference of opinions, and that's fine, that's kind of what we're hearing, that's kind of why you're here. But I try to look at everything, six months to a year out, eight months to a year and a half out for planning, and the type we have to do as a town. And given this a really good look over, I believe, especially with the insurance issue, was when we're dealing with the state, there's really not much haggling or what we can do when the state says this is what you have to do. So I'm for this. I'm trying to clean this up, try to get some consistency in our programs.
Thank you very much. I think after meeting and speaking with various people, educated people, people I respect about this issue, there are possibly some drawbacks, but I think the pluses far outweigh the negatives. So I think I am really for this and would like to see the people passionate about the recreation in this town on board and try to make it better. So I'd like to open it up for roll call, please.
Councilman White?
No.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is new business.
I have nothing.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Nothing.
Councilman Fulmer?
Sorry, two things. One, we have people inside 32 Heckman Street, there was no certificate of habitability issued, I'd like to bring it to the mayor's attention in hopes of getting inspector out there this week, sir.
I have something on that. I am aware of that. It has been reported. I followed up on it, and it's in the process of being addressed at this time. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Fulmer, but I, I am on it, and I will stay on it for all this particular issue. When I have my report, I will address that issue at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Just to defer to Council winner, inside Chapter 464 of our rental properties ordinance, it does state and give the town the ability to request that the landlord pay for the relocation of the individuals should a certificate of habitability not be provided, correct?
Yes, the town requires, the town forces the relocation of the tenants, and that cost is borne by the landlord.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. The next is, since we were speaking earlier about continuity and we're taking on this whole new recreation, the life of itself, I'd like to get everyone's opinions with regard to perhaps maybe taking the recreation buildings, all the town-owned recreation buildings in the town of Phillipsburg, and perhaps maybe painting them garnet and gray, so that we are, there's some continuity within the town of Phillipsburg. I think currently, right now, they're all white, and some of them have graffiti on them, so we can, I'll assist. Is that something we need a resolution for, is that just something the mayor can do, Rich?
Yeah, the mayor can handle that under, basically, as council desires, explore that.
It's all yours. Thank you, Councilman Fulmer. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Council Vice President McVeigh?
I'm good, sir.
I'm good this week. Let's move on to old business. Resolution 2020-22, tabled on January 7th, 2020. Resolution of the Town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey, authorizing award of contract for professional services with Richard W. Winter, Esquire of Lavery, Lavery Firm. Motion on table?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Council?
Just a role call.
Role call?
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilman White?
No.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
No.
Councilman Fulmer?
I'm just happy to see, Rich, congratulations. You are finally appointed after four years to the Town of Phillipsburg.
We didn't vote yet.
I have feelings, I hope it goes through. I'll wait, Rich, I'll wait.
Council, Council Vice President McVeigh?
Good sir.
And I am fine with that. Role call, please.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Hey, Rich?
Yes.
Yes.
There you go.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes.
Next, we have a attorney.
Yeah.
Next, old business, 2020-26, tabled on January 7th, 2020. A resolution of the Town of Phillipsburg, County of Warren, State of New Jersey, authorizing award of a contract for professional services with Fulness Goldman's, conserved, PA attorneys at law. Motion on table, please.
So moved.
Second. Role call?
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Discussion, Councilman White?
No.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
No.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes. Oh, this is for discussion, discussion? Wow, I'm so excited. Nah.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Good sir.
And role call?
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman DeGraalmo?
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer?
Yes.
Council Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Piazza?
Yes. Next up, I'd like to welcome our mayor, Todd Trusigny, to give his mayor report.
Thank you, Council President. This is the mayor's report, January 21st, 2020. This is my second mayor's report, and I have positive information to report tonight. First, I would like to say that we continue to clean up Phillipsburg. Seventy-plus properties have been cleaned up since I've taken office on January the 1st. Where we are all getting positive remarks from many residents through Facebook, text messages, and emails, et cetera. Positive reinforcement will drive me in a positive mode to continue this war on garbage. Second, I want to propose to council a property management company ordinance for absentee landlords, bank-owned properties, unoccupied properties, et cetera, that live more than 10 miles away from Phillipsburg. This will give our residents a better quality of life and for the betterment of Phillipsburg. It will also make absentee landlords pay a management company to control vermin and other problems that may occur. This will make landlords accountable for issues we face now. I need cooperation for inspections in my future property management inspector. I must say, inspectors are complying with the mayor. I met with Mayor Sal Panto before I was sworn in, and this, and that is the solution for, when sworn in, there was a solution for a better quality of life. We did not just shake hands, eat lunch, and have a photo op. We both agreed that many things, but most of all, we will work together. Third, last week, Council President Piazza, Councilman White, and engineer Stan Shrek discussed a comprehensive road resurfacing program. The roads that need servicing must have sore inspections before this happens, like Councilwoman DeGraalmo stated. So I'm reiterating what she's saying. I believe the bidding for this project goes out March 3rd. We must do this first because we cannot dig up our new surfaces once they are in place and waste taxpayers' money. Fourth, the FERC Town Falcons will be saved. My grandfather is one of the founders of this great organization in 1948, John R. Coyle, a master sergeant in World War II, would be overjoyed. I wrestled and played baseball for FERC Town since 1969 and share the same feelings and emotions. They are under, under the town's umbrella. Town Attorney Rich Wenner, along with CFO Bob Merlo, Councilman Robert Fulmer, and Council President Randy Piazza, I all must commend by working together under the direction of the two new coordinators, Matthew Thomas Skirbo and Darren Badeau, we will make FERC Town a success. I believe the all people just mentioned truly care about the children in the youth organization now and for generations to come. They will work with the recreation director and under my direction, the mayor. Fifth, tonight, we will begin the Clean Space Campaign and potential redevelopment process for unfixable properties. First of all, 85 Lewis Street, 14749 Mercer Street, which is a fire, fire property, and the Ice House. These properties, in my opinion, need to be eliminated. I will target many other properties, I promise you that, and we all know which ones they are. The mayor and council are working together, and the proof is all here, what I've read The mayor and council are working together, and the proof is all here, what I've read tonight. In my closing, I want to thank you all again for allowing me the honor and privilege to be your mayor of Phillipsburg. Respectfully submitted, Todd M. Terset, Mayor of Phillipsburg.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, I'd like to have our town engineer, Stan Shrek. Hey, Stan.
Thank you, Council President. Following up on our meeting list.
Friday?
Friday.
Friday, yes.
Yes, sir.
Mayor White, Council President Piazza, Vicki Kelly, and Tom Relone, who are the president. In summary, yes, we do have grants that we're working on. We have three in front of us right now. We've been successful in cleaning grants. 2018 grant was for Heckman Phase 3. 2019 grant was for Heckman Phase 4. And we just received 2020 grant for Warren Street Phase 1. So we held, there was a suggestion, we held Heckman Phase 3, knowing we were going to get Heckman Phase 4. That way we do a larger project, you get economy of scale. Traditionally and historically, we look at savings of up near 30%. We can get a larger project, in this case, we have that. So you authorize me tonight to proceed with a design for Heckman Phase 4. I have Heckman Phase 3 complete, as I call it, it's in the can right now. So we'll proceed with Heckman Phase 4, I've already authorized a survey, but most importantly, as discussed in, as Councilwoman Dejrola brought up, we have to look at the infrastructure before we make the investment. Earlier roads, we've prepped and crawled trying to do that investigation with the equipment that we had in-house. We did, I think we're good with those roads, but we will now, with the roads that we have planned, put out a separate contract to do the cleaning inspection before we go into those roads. So I'd just like to summarize what we're planning to do very shortly, get some roads planned. We have Heckman Phase 3, which will be from Lincoln Street to the DPW, Armory Building. That has a DFT grant of $270,000 and a estimated cost of $326,000. Heckman Phase 4 continues from the Armory to Roseberry Street. We have an award of $214,000 and change, anticipated cost of about $400,000 for that. Warren Street Phase 1 is Anderson Lynn, that's down near the school, probably the area where we got some needs of sidewalk repair. We would, under the program that we have, we would have laid it on this one, applied for Phase 2, which we would get later in the year, but trying to advance this whole go, just with Phase 1, and use some more of the design work for that. So that has a NJDFT award of $255,000, anticipated cost of about $500,000. We have a grant under review right now that council approved submission of at the end of.